Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our April 20th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and TiVo, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, TiVo. Next, item B is adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, there are no changes.
Okay, Chair, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt the agenda as posted and presented, and allow Chair to deviate as necessary. So moved. Go here a second. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously, and our agenda is adopted. Item C is called to the public. If you are on the phone, if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand. If not, it's star six. So call to the public going once. Call to the public going twice. And call to the public here in the boardroom, anyone? If not, then we will move on to item D, current events. One, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. I'd like to let everybody know that the road crews are out and they are repairing roads. Right now, we're getting ready to do some chip sealing, so please be mindful when you see the road crews out there. Give them, slow down, give them wide berth. They're very important to us, we want to keep them all working. The other thing that's going on is I saw a message board go up on I-19 just south of Ririco Drive, and that is the, to announce on the 26th, ADOT is going to start working on Ruby Road Bridge and doing some bridge repair work on the south side of the bridge. So again, be patient, be careful, slow down, and we'll get through this construction project. And Mr. Chairman, that's what I have to report.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Maleta.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I have a few things to report. Number one, I had the honor and privilege of hosting small counties on Wednesday, and it seems like everyone's transitioning with their vaccines from not having enough to now we have enough, and we're looking for people to vaccinate. That seems to be the issue now. Plus, the other big issue going on is our crazy bills that we're having to fend off. And I want to thank all our colleagues, our team, for being on top of this. Another thing is, like I said, the next day, actually, I attended CSA Executive and also the big board meeting, and lots of crazy legislation we need to look for. As you've seen, our governor has put out some executive orders that, in my personal opinion, are a little too soon, too early. I personally would like to caution people and say that we need to take baby steps, as we did before, take baby steps, continue practicing safety, and I thank our, again, our team for doing a great job with the vaccinations. Jeff, Jennifer Mariposa, Deena over at the hospital, the city, all involved, thank you for your hard work and efforts. Lastly, I want to thank the Bella Vista neighborhood for meeting with us. I want to thank staff, Kim, Jennifer, Frank, and Jesus. You know, it was a tough start, but I think once we all realized we were on the same team, everything went super. We have a good plan to move forward, and I thank everyone involved. The public did a great job. I think they're unifying along with us and getting our state legislators involved as well. I'm excited to move forward in a professional manner to make sure the neighborhood is safe more than anything. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Maleta, and I'll keep my remarks brief. First, congratulations, Coach Malera. His tennis team here at Nogales High School is ranked number one in the state, and hopefully will continue.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. They'll do something great. The other thing, too, is I want to, on behalf of the Nogales Unified School District Board, thank the county and staff, Mariposa, City of Nogales. I've heard nothing but compliments on the vaccine site there at the rec center. I also want to thank South 32, who has been helping out in the eastern and a little bit in the northern region, in Patagonia, Elgin, and Tubac, helping administer COVID-19 shots. So it truly is a team effort from businesses to the public sector that has been doing well. I think this weekend, we're going to be doing the 16 and 17-year-olds over the weekend, which is good for our schools. And as Supervisor Maleta says, is that we can't let our guard down. I know the state legislature makes the rules, and some of the laws that they want to pass really make it very hard for local jurisdictions like us to be able to meet our commitments to the residents, and even short of what they're trying to do with this new tax omnibus bill, which really is going to, you know, it's designed to help business commercial, but at the end of the day, jurisdictions like ours are, have to make a choice, do we create or increase taxes on our residents to make up the shortfalls? And that is not good for us, and hopefully, people that listen will contact our people up in Phoenix and say, you know, it's a bad idea. And so I want to thank CSA as well. CSA has been a very good organization that we are members of, in keeping track of what's going on, keeping everybody informed of what's going on, and then asking us to respond to the legislature as it is needed. So with that, I will go over to Madam Manager for her report.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, coworkers. Over the last two weeks, I attended the County Manager's Monthly Meeting at CSA. Well, I did it virtually, but CSA sponsors it. The Small County Caucus and CSA Board of Executive Meeting, as Supervisor Malera mentioned. Supervisor Malera, Jesus and myself continue our bi-weekly meetings with ADEQ and ADOT to address the concern that Supervisor Malera discussed earlier in his report, and I also attended the meeting with the Bella Vista residents, and I concur 100%. It was a great meeting. I'd like to thank staff for taking the time out of their Saturday to attend that. I also attended a broadband discussion that was hosted by CIGO. We continue our monthly meetings with the Governor's Office on vaccine distribution. And then Supervisor Bracker and I also virtually attended a repurposing Sonoyta Building meeting with a couple of the residents from the East County. That's all I have to report today. Chairman Reese, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move on to item E, Department Reports and Activities. One, Finance, Cash Investment Expenditure and Revenue Reports. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have the cash and investment report, and I also have the revenue quarterly report after that. Cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $12,666,036, with an investment amount of $6.7 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,665,696, with an investment amount of $814,000. The Flood Controlled District has an overall balance of $2,818.93, with an investment amount of $1.8 million. The Jail District has an overall balance of $2,907,992, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $33,836,876, with an investment amount of $12,274,718, for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $12,9658.
I'll pass on the revenue performance report, the quarterly report. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the quarterly report, just us to review where we're at in our collections and revenues. I'll go over the important items, and if you need to go over any other items, we can definitely review that as well. The real estate taxes collected to date is $9,413,203, which is about a 66% collection rate, which is very similar, and that's what happens year after year when I went back, you know, about five years, and that's normal and typical. The auto tax collection right now, it's at $1,359,041, which is a little bit up from previous years, and that's about 90% collected of our budgeted amount. The county half-cent share tax revenue, that one you'll see a substantial increase, and that's due to the job contracting that we've been collecting, and that's at $3,429,231. That, however, is going to change. This past month, for the month of March, I noticed a significant drop that we're back to our normal collection of the contracting. Okay, so thinking that that's probably going to end, if it didn't already, on the contracting. The state shared sales tax revenue, that's also a little bit up, that's at $4,021,175, compared to our budgeted amount. So for total revenues, we're up to par with the collections through the year at 79%, 79.5%. The following pages are the expenditure performance reports, and that's for the general fund and then for the special revenue funds. And I'd be more than glad to go over any of the expenses if you want me to. The first, I guess, the first part of the second page, that covers the general fund, and it covers all the departments there, and we're pretty much up to par as to expenditures. We're a little bit less in expenses from last year compared to last year, about that 5% that we requested.
Are there any questions, gentlemen? If not, we can always sit down and meet with you individually if we have any specific questions on some of this. I think for the most part, we have always been very conservative when it comes to estimating and budgeting. We've always kind of just counted revenues a little bit shorter, and usually, it works to our benefit because at the end, they come in a little bit higher. So, gentlemen, questions, comments? If not, Mauricio, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much, Mauricio.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Item two, Workforce Development Update. Mauricio, good morning, how are you?
Good morning, Chairman Reese, members of the board.
Good morning.
Co-workers present. As a result of the COVID-19 infection rate decreasing, our persistency in following safety protocols, and our outstanding staff monitoring and adjusting to any circumstance, we were able to reopen the Arizona at Work One-Stop Center to general walk-in services without requiring appointments on Thursday, March 11th. Prior to reopening, we were averaging 113 clients per week. Since March 11th, we have been averaging 254 clients per week. In addition to taking clients' temperature upon entering the building and asking the CDC COVID-19 screening questions, we have recently taken our process one step further and are now adding a couple vaccination questions to our welcoming process. We added the vaccine inquiry piece to our screening process on April 12, and since then, we have successfully assisted 30 clients in registering for the vaccine. The majority of our youth participants have been released from virtual activities and are now gaining life work experience. We continue to enforce safety protocols, and we're advocating for the 16- and 17-year-old upcoming vaccination clinics as well. It is with utmost pride that I inform you that two of our youth participants have officially been offered a full-time position within our county. One was hired by the Sheriff's Department and the other by the Clerk of the Superior Court. Congratulations to both of them. Yesterday, we hosted our first face-to-face hiring event for a contracting company. Again, following safety protocols, we set up a tarp, tables, and chairs outside the facility. The event was from 9:00 to 2:00. They hired 10 individuals on the spot, and we will continue to refer any interested clients to them throughout the month. The company was very pleased with the hospitality and the outcome of the event, and they look forward to holding future hiring events at our facility. The adult education program continues to offer virtual classes. However, with the one-time additional allocation that we received in February, we are now offering an additional class in the evening. This hybrid class is being offered to provide learning opportunities to those individuals that were struggling with the virtual learning process. Included in the last report, which was presented to you in January, I mentioned embracing innovation and visiting various possibilities of delivering some of our services virtually. In an attempt to adapt to the new norms, we discovered a dire need to redesign our webpage. Today, I'm excited to report that we're working on a webpage project which will increase communication, include a calendar of events, a career portal, and along with other engagement features that will be beneficial to our community. Lastly, I want to mention that the DES is offering free WIWA training opportunities this month, which are geared towards Board of Supervisors, Board Directors, and local Workforce Development Board members. Supervisor Bracker attended one last week, and if any of you are interested in attending any of the remaining workshops, we can still register any of you if you just reach out to me. Thank you for your time today.
Great, thank you, Mauricio. What was the training you took?
They're just going through the basic breakdown of the board, how it operates, and they're going to progress through the next two Fridays on that issue.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to item F, Action Items. One, Discussion Possible Action to Approve the Reappointment of Didra Eschelman as a volunteer pro tempore to serve the Justice Court from 5/02/2021 through 11/2/21, and DeeDee Sammett as a volunteer pro tempore to serve the Superior Court from 7/01/2021 through 6/30/2022. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go here a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, Discussion Possible Action to Appoint Alma Schultz as Clerk of the Board Elections Director effective April 12, 2021. Ms. St. John.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Today, it's my pleasure to announce Alma Schultz as our new Clerk of the Board Elections Director. She was born and raised in Nogales and Ririco, Arizona, and is mother to one daughter who is her everything. She obtained her bachelor's degree in public management and policy with distinction, and this part's going to hurt me, Alma, from the University of Arizona in 2014. Alma is proud to have attended her first college classes in Nogales, Arizona, before, from Cochise College before transferring to the university. In addition, she has worked in the county for the past seven years, holding various positions at the Recorder's Office, County Attorney's Office, and most recently, Juvenile Probation Department as a probation officer. Alma is compassionate about helping others and has dedicated her career in public service to serve our community. Her professional interests and goals as Clerk of the Board Elections Director is to ensure integrity, provide excellent community service, encourage innovation, and improve business efficiencies. So it's my pleasure to introduce Alma to the community.
Okay.
Thank you, Alma.
So your recommendation, even though it is a U of A grad, that we appoint her as the Board Clerk and the Elections Director?
Yes, sir, that's my recommendation.
So Chair, entertain a motion. Before you make your comments, let's make it official. Chair, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, including Sun Devil recommending and another Sun Devil voting for you. Alma, I know we hadn't welcomed you earlier. You were sitting up here on the dais next to Liz, kind of showing you the ropes, and with that, please take the podium and...
Yes, good morning, everyone, thank you. I am truly honored, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity. Thank you, have a wonderful day, thank you.
Well, welcome, and we look forward to working with you, and the good thing is you've got at least a couple of years before the first election cycle hits, so it'll give you time to prepare. So welcome, Alma, and congratulations.
Thank you again.
As if you can tell, we have a rivalry, but it's a fun one. Item three, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Appointment of Precinct Committee Person for the Republican Party, Carmen V. Flores, Nogales, Juan, as requested by Steve McHugh, Chairman of the Santa Cruz County Republican Party. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go here a second.
Second.
Any discussion other than, this is a bipartisan support. So there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and the appointment is made. Okay, Item four, Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Fair Housing Resolution Number 2021-05, Committing Santa Cruz County to the Fair Housing Practices and Identifying Other Actions Taken to Affirmatively Further for Fair Housing. And this is something we do every year. So Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Items five, Discussion Possible Action to Approve HIDA Grant Number HT212951 for Fiscal Year 2021 in the amount of $284,963. That's from the Attorney's Office, everything in order?
My boss admitted it, so yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a good one, Kim. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Go here a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, Discussion Possible Action, Recommendation of Approval or Disapproval of Application for Extension of Premises Permanent at the Halicon Vineyard LLC DBA Ruin Wines. Everything in order? Any objections?
Yes, sir.
Anything, everything good? Chair, entertain a motion there to approve.
So moved.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Bond for Duplicate Warrant Number 4667649 in the amount of $300 dated 3/29/21, payable to Arizona fundraiser. Everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, Tax Valuations A through H. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go here a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, Monthly Reports. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
All monthly reports are in with the exception of the Treasurer's Office.
Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion to accept reports that have been submitted?
So moved.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those reports are accepted. Item 10, Demand. Supervisor Maleta.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve demands totaling $942,569, of which $334,054.19 from the general fund.
Go here a second.
Aye, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good, we can pay our bills. Item 11, Approval of Minutes of 3/23/2021 and 4/06/2021. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go here a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next two items are related to our public hearings, and we have a study session at 10:00, so let's take a four-minute break, and then we'll convene at 10:00 with the study session.
Good timing, man.
Three, two, one, okay, it's 10:00, so we'll go ahead and reconvene our session and go to the study session. I don't think we need to make a motion, do we? Since the agenda's been adopted?
I don't think so. It doesn't hurt.
Okay, so anyway, I will entertain a...
Move to reconvene.
No, to, no, we have taken a recess, so I'll just go ahead and entertain a motion to recess regular session and convene into our study session.
So moved.
Second, Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now convened into our study session. Dr. Pareda, good morning. I don't see you on the screen.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you for inviting us.
Great, is Dr. Williams on there, too?
Yes, yes.
Well, welcome. Please, Jennifer, huh?
Deena.
Deena, are you on there, too?
I'm here.
Okay, great.
And also our CEO, Ed Sicarello, is on the line as well.
Well, great.
Yeah, hi, I'm just at...
Ed, thank you and welcome. So Jennifer, if you'd like to get us started, or Jeff, either one, we'll go ahead.
So this is our monthly study session that we've been holding in conjunction with Mariposa and Holy Cross Hospital, just to go over the vaccine updates. And I think I'd like to turn it over to Mariposa to discuss the 16- and 17-year-old, that's our new development. But first, I would like to congratulate our county, being the smallest county in the state of Arizona, but we're number one with percentage of vaccination, so we're very proud of that stat. We appreciate the community coming in to get vaccinated and all the support that we've had over the past three or four months. And I see Genesis on the phone, too. I'd like to thank you for that article, Genesis. I thought it was a good article, so thank you for helping get the word out there. With that being said, unless the board has questions of Jeff or I, I will turn it over to Dr. Pareda to update us on the 16- and 17-year-old, or anything else Mariposa would like to talk about.
Great, thank you. Dr. Pareda, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity this morning. As Jennifer says, we are entering to new phase of vaccination with the Pfizer vaccine. As you know, the vaccine is authorized to be used in the lower age, is 16 years of age. We did receive a supply of vaccine, we have about 2,300 doses, and we've decided to use those vaccines in that age group, 16 through 18 years of age. We think there are about 1,700 children in that category. We do plan to begin that effort this coming Saturday at the rec, April 24th, followed by Monday, April 26th, and we think we can get virtually everyone done in those two days. We feel very good that this is happening as the number of children in the country represent an increasing number of cases. So this is really important, not just to prevent infection, but keep our schools safer. The process is the same, with some exceptions. We, as you know, we need parental consent to administer vaccination, and we'd like to have a legal guardian accompany the minor to the rec, as we always do. And I know this is something that people want to know about, we have providers at the rec to mostly to manage questions, any possible reactions that can occur as a result of the vaccine. This vaccine will need a second shot, which will be given 21 days later, which will be Saturday, May 15. We hope to get that group done there very quickly. As Jeff has mentioned in the past, Pfizer has submitted their emergency use authorization to vaccinate children 12 through 15. We'll be ready to do that when FDA approves that, or grants that request. We think there may be around 4,000 children in that group, but we can get that done pretty quickly. We can probably do it within a week or a few more days after that. So we're really excited about being able to offer this vaccine to children. Any remaining doses that are not administered, we will open to the public, and we hope likely will be Wednesday, April 28th, for those individuals who would like to have a choice with the Pfizer vaccine. But at the moment, we'd like to reserve those for children who have no other option. And then I just want to make a brief comment about what Jennifer just said about the county and the vaccination rate. We are at about 45.6%, which is the highest in the state, and that's the result of the collaboration that we've had with a lot of people, of course, the county, the Health Department, the City of Nogales, the rec, the volunteers, the Nogales PD, and a lot of other people. So I want to thank everyone for making this possible. So again, Pfizer is a major development. We continue to offer Moderna. We're getting the supplies every week, so we'll continue to use Moderna. We're very pleased to offer that other option for Pfizer vaccine. I'm going to ask Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams, do you have any other comments, or Jennifer, regarding what I just said?
I do. You know, you may have questions about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. As you know, it's currently been suspended. You know, there's a correlation between blood clots, specifically something called cerebrovenous thrombosis. It was exclusively in women between the age of 18 to 48. And they were around one or two weeks after vaccination. The European Union released today that they think that even though there is a possible link, that the benefits outweigh the risk. So the benefits of vaccinating, you know, outweighed any possible risks, because of course the numbers were very, very low. But of course, we still have it on pause here in our county.
Yeah, we, thank you for that reminder, Dr. Williams. Yeah, once that CDC and FDA press release was sent out, we passed our vaccination the same day. It was on a Tuesday. We have those vaccines on hold until we get guidance. It's very unfortunate, as I've said before, because the vaccine offers an option for certain groups of people, people who travel a lot, that cannot come back for the second shot, people who are on the go, you know, commercial truck drivers, et cetera. But it is what it is, and we're just waiting for CDC and FDA to provide guidance. But we do have some doses left over as a result of that suspension. Thank you for that reminder.
Great. So gentlemen, any questions of Dr. Pareda or Dr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Pareda, or Dr. Williams, or Jeff, can you talk to us about the transmission rate and how important that is to us as a community to be tracking at this point in the pandemic?
So I'll make some initial comments, I mean, a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, if you look at the data, the number of cases in the county has been relatively low. I looked at that this morning. It's been two, three, five, six cases a day, I think, in the last few weeks, so very, very low number of cases. We attribute that to the vaccine, but that's not the case in other parts of the country. In other parts of the country, there's actually a certain number of cases. In some locations, that's highest 25% increase. There are about 66,000 cases of COVID infection reported every day. So it's still a significant transmission issue. The vaccination should not stop us from continuing to wear masks everywhere. Everywhere we go, wash our hands and keep the distance. So it's certainly important to continue to do that, to prevent transmission. More so, we see cases among children, which is a good thing for us to be able to offer the Pfizer vaccine. And the concern, as you've seen in the newspapers, about the variants that are more transmissible and in some cases may have a high fatality rate. So I think in the county, transmission has been relatively low, perhaps as a result of the vaccine. We hope that's the case, but we can lower our guard. We've done very well the last few weeks, and we want to keep it that way. There have been a couple of days in which we only have one case, which is remarkable. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I think terms of transmissibility and confirmed COVID-19 infections, we have dropped significantly. You may recall in the summer, a few weeks ago before vaccination began, we reported over 100 cases a day. That's no longer the case. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you very much. You say hello.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question along those lines.
I'm sorry. Good morning. Thank you again for all your hard work and efforts. Dr. Pareda and Dr. Williams, this question's for you guys along the same lines that Supervisor Bracker mentioned. You know, I know initially we wanted to contact trace, but things got so out of hand. But now I think it may be a little easier with the numbers down to contact trace. Are we in the process of doing this? Is this a Jeff question, then?
Yeah, that's...
I think it's a question for Jeff, yes.
Yeah, we are in the process of... We sent the contact tracing portion to the state to follow up on all our cases. We are in the process of transitioning that back to us to do the actual contact tracing. We do continue to do all the case investigations, but we want to take back that contact tracing piece as well, since we are here and we can make those contacts a lot easier, I think, than the state can. So we are in the process of bringing that back to the county level.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's going to make it safer. And like you said, I believe Dr. Pareda said, I personally preach the fact that we need to continue to be cautious, even though our governor is a little loose on his rules.
Exactly.
But it's my personal opinion, but we need, as a community, continue to be cautious and practice CDC guidelines. Again, thank you all, our team, our local, our county, Jeff, Jennifer, their teams, Mariposa. You guys have been amazing. Dina, you and your staff, what a great team we are part of, and it makes you proud. And I guarantee you, we sleep pretty good at night, knowing that you all are doing an exceptional job. Thank you again.
Jeff, you had something else, or Jennifer?
No, I just wanted to touch a little bit on what Dr. Pareda said about the EUA for the 12 to 15-year-olds. Pfizer did go to the FDA for that on April 9th, and it's supposed to take roughly two to three weeks. So we should be hearing something relatively soon on when we may be able to start that age group as well. The other vaccine, Moderna, as well as Pfizer, has started studies on six-month-old and up. So they are looking at those complete age groups to be able to be vaccinated throughout. So still more to come on those vaccines.
Well, thank you, Jeff, Jennifer.
Just a brief comment about vaccination. It may, you've seen some reports of the vaccine, so the demand for the vaccine decreasing in some counties and some locations. And I think our county, all of us need to promote vaccination. This is our best hope, and I just want to make sure that that message is sent out. We, you know, plan to continue to do that. You may know we host a Facebook Live session at the end of the week. We have one scheduled for Thursday, the same thing at the radio station. But I think all of us need to continue to promote the vaccinations for everyone. I think we see patients who were initially reluctant to get them, and they see that the vaccine is safe and it's working. So we hope that the demand for the vaccine continues and doesn't drop over time. That's, I think that's our best hope.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to make sure that Supervisor Malera's question was answered. So we did continue to contact trace throughout the entire pandemic. It was turned over to the state for a while when the numbers got overwhelming and staff couldn't handle it. But just so that it's clear, we did contact trace throughout our community for the entire pandemic, even when the numbers were high. And then I'd also like to do a brag just on Mariposa. So if you look at the number of vaccinations given throughout the state of Arizona from healthcare clinics, Mariposa, the last number I checked, which was about last week, so Dr. Pierre Ed, you might have to correct me, but Mariposa had given 75% of those vaccines. So that's great for our small, little community. And that was all I had, Supervisor Reese. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Madam Manager, can you address the point that for many months, we were chasing vaccines to try to get into arms? The situation has kind of flipped. We're chasing arms to try to get the vaccines in them now. Can you talk about some of the things that the county is doing at our second point of distribution in Ria Rico, and then this Friday at Patagonia, and also at the distribution pod on Ho-HoCom?
Okay, so yes, sir. So I'll take the distribution pod at Nogales first, because that one obviously has been in, we've been working on that one since mid-January. So about two weeks ago, staff started staffing tables at Via's Market, Food City, Safeway. I don't think we ever got permission to go to Walmart, but we would sit there with the online calendar and try to register people for their vaccine, sometimes the same day. In addition, we have done the Facebook Live, like Dr. P. mentioned. We reached out, Dr. P. went on Maxima, Kagon. So we've done all sorts of outreach to try to get people into our Nogales facility. The Ria Rico in Patagonia that you're referring to, Supervisor Bracker, that's in conjunction with South 32. As Supervisor Reese mentioned earlier in our meeting, South 32 has paid for their company, Remote Medical, to come down and give vaccinations for three weeks. 14 of those days are going to be at Ria Rico, at the county building, from 8:30 to 4:00, and then one day this Friday in Patagonia. And so those, we have done a press release on that in Patagonia, and I see Town Manager Robinson on the line as well. But there are flyers out in Patagonia, and then our call center are taking those calls in order to schedule those appointments.
Are we taking walk-ins at any of these facilities?
So, yes, we are taking walk-ins, and we probably plan to expand that. The county team is meeting with our Emergency Management Department. As you know, it's been about three weeks now when we did kind of, we had 100 extra doses and we got overwhelmed. We do think we're in a very different situation now. And so, yes, we're preparing for those scenarios so that we can easily take walk-ins. We really feel with our percentage of vaccinated rate that we have a big part of the population covered. But we do know we've missed some populations or some people, as Dr. P. mentioned, they're just, they have vaccine hesitancy. And so maybe by having walk-ins readily available, that will encourage those, that last group to come in. So the team is preparing for that, but we do, you know, want an orderly movement with that so as not to, just to have everybody be safe, have it still be a really good experience. Because as you all have heard, it's been nothing but compliments, and we don't want to turn that around. But yes, we are, we're slowly moving into more of the walk-in scenario.
Okay, great. Well, you know, it's, to me, it's what a turnaround over the last year from, you know, this, the amount of people contracting, I mean, to the vaccinations and, you know, I think at the end of the day is that as individuals, we should make every effort to try to get that vaccine in you, because it really does protect. I know when I got my vaccines, there was one day I felt lousy, but then after that, you know, I felt great again. The second one was probably around the same, but, you know, 12 hours later, it's like nothing had happened, and you continue to move on. But I think at the end of the day, if, as we move forward to try to vaccinate our children, because I think it's real important from what we're seeing now, is that the amount or the increase of the young children that are getting sick, and some of them are even dying, I've seen some cases where they reported back east. So I think as Pfizer and Moderna move forward with their studies for six-month-old and older, it's like the measles vaccine or any other vaccine that we have to take. And hopefully, the more people that are vaccinated, the quicker we can get out of this. You know, we still encourage people to wear their mask, even though it's not mandated. I think it's important that you don't let your guard down. People need to understand that private businesses that have mask requirements, you should respect them. You're going into their business, and if they request it, please don't get into confrontation with the employees or anybody. Please, you know, be mindful that you're not just protecting yourself, but you're protecting everyone around you. Social distancing, again, very important. Washing your hands constantly for 30 seconds with soap and water is important. If you do use a sanitizer, make sure that when you put it on there, that it completely evaporates. So, you know, you just don't put it on there and then walk away. You put it into your, into your, into your hands, into your skin. You know, I want to thank everyone that has been helping. I know our staff. But we also need to thank the volunteers that have been down at the Recreation Center that have been there every day, day in, day out, helping with this pandemic. You know, we should be grateful that we have a lot of community members and former employees that have been going down there, that, you know, some of them are wiping down tables, some of them are taking, are, you know, doing inputs for the people that are coming in. So total team effort. You know, Mariposa Community Health Center has done an outstanding job with the distribution. City of Nogales, from allowing us to use a Recreation Center, the hospital for doing that, our staff here, that has been, you know, I, sometimes a lot of calls coming in about trying to set up appointments, and then following up and letting people know even on weekends that your appointments have been set up. So, you know, please, you know, the governor can issue whatever executive orders he wants that he feels are right, but I think we need to make sure that we continue to do what we can to make sure that we don't continue or have an outbreak or have something that really puts us back, you know, a few steps. So Dr. Pareda, Dr. Williams, Dina, thank you so much for the update. And, you know, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, you know, we'll be able to come to our normal life as much as possible after a pandemic like this. But I think there's going to be a lot of lessons learned, and hopefully, we don't have to face this in our lifetime, or any of our children have to face this in their lifetime. So if there are no other comments or discussion, Dr. Pareda, Dr. Williams, thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for those words, and we'll continue to work together to vaccinate everyone who wants a vaccine. And again, thank you for promoting the vaccine at all levels. We appreciate it.
We will, and we will continue. And Tom, we have the vaccines available. Please sign up, and let's get an appointment schedule, and let's get everybody... and let's get everybody vaccinated and as soon as we're able to. And FDA approves for children, uh, six months and older, we will go ahead and offer that as well to our community. So God bless you guys, take care, stay safe, and, uh, we'll talk, uh, soon. Thank you, Dr. Pareda.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Have a great day. Bye-bye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Okay, so, uh, shall I entertain a motion to adjourn our study session and convene public hearing?
So moved.
Second, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item, thank you, Jeff. Uh, item one, adoption ordinance number 21, excuse me, 2021-4, relating to the establishment of an additional $5 fee for every writ issued on behalf of the Justice of the Peace, uh, requiring the fee to be transferred to the Constable Ethics Committee Fund pursuant to ARS 11445A17. This is a request from the Justice of the Peace. Are you?
I believe Rosio's on the line. Rosio, Rosio from the Justice of the Peace?
Rosio, are you on the line?
Is it star six? Let's take it off.
Star six or star nine?
Star nine.
To unmute? Are you there, Rosio? Ah, I see your hand, okay. So just unmute yourself. Star six? Star six, there we go. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good, good, good morning. How are you, Rosio?
I'm okay, how about you?
Yeah, well, not bad for an old guy here and, uh, dealing with my two colleagues. Uh, we're having a good time. So anyway, can you explain? Can you explain a little bit about the extra $5 fee?
Yes, um, the constable used to charge that fee every time there was a writ issued. They would have to charge that fee and they would send it over to the state. Now, uh, that fee is supposed to be charged by the court and the court be transferring that fee over to the Constable Ethics Committee Fund.
So, so would that be for training?
Um, yes, that's the, the constable training.
Okay. So, so this is just an, what is the fee right now?
The, the fee is, uh, for a regular writ, the fee is, I believe, $37. So we would be adding a $5 additional fee, so we could submit that $5 fee to the state for the Constable's fund.
Okay. So now the fee was going to be $39?
Correct.
And this is something that's being done statewide?
Yes, actually, uh, I believe we are the last, only do it since I've been already established since last year.
Okay.
And I have the ARS here, I can leave that to you. Um, for every writ issued on behalf of the Justice of the Peace, a fee established by the Board of Supervisors, not $5 per writ. Money collected from the writ shall be deposited in the Constable Ethics Funders and Training Fund.
Okay, so this ordinance was published as required by, um, law. Kim has reviewed it. And, um, this is just a public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on this at this time.
Yeah. Supervisor Mallett, any comments?
I'm good, I'm good.
Are you done there?
Supervisor Bracker asked the questions.
I am thinking, Mr. Chairman.
So at this time, uh, we'll open it up for public comment. Star six, if you're on the phone, or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Okay, going once. Going twice, okay. Perfect, okay. So, uh, thank you, Rosio, then we'll move on. And, uh, this is an action item when we end our public hearings, that we will go to our regular agenda. So item two is adoption ordinance number 2021-06, rezoning .79 acres of parcel number, numbers 11, excuse me, 112-15-011 and 112-15-011A, section seven, township 21. South range 13 east from HB, Historic Neighborhood Business, to HMF, Historic Multifamily, case number REZ2101. Frank, are you on the call?
I am, uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Frank. Can you, uh, tell us about this, please?
Yes, uh, it's pretty straightforward, actually. Um, it could be, please, if you turn down a little bit, get any feedback?
Yeah.
Uh, it's going to essentially, uh, rezone .7 acres back off of Laurel Street. And, uh, essentially what it is, two parcels that were previously owned, uh, historic, uh, multifamily that, uh, two years back were rezoned to historic commercial, uh, so that the folks there could, uh, run a motel. Uh, it's approximately six units and then, um, the, uh, there, there are going to be no new structures on site. Essentially, they want to rezone it back to historic multifamily so that they can do longer-term stays and, uh, condominium-type units as opposed to, uh, the, uh, longer-term stay apartments and recondominions as opposed to the, uh, the short-term motel use.
Okay, great. And, uh, how did the Planning and Zoning Commission vote on it?
So the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, January 28th, uh, 2021, and they voted unanimously to approve the project.
Okay, great. Thank you, Frank. So at this time, we'll open it up for comments. Uh, star six to unmute. Or if you're on the Zoom call, raise your hand and we will go from there. Going once. Going twice. And seeing there are no comments, are there any comments from my colleagues?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. So at this time then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
So moved.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will go on to item 12, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 202104 relating to the establishment of an additional $5 fee for every writ issued on behalf of the Justice of the Peace, requiring the fee to be transferred to the Constable Ethics Committee Fund pursuant to ARS 1145A17. Uh, shall I entertain a motion?
Approved, approved.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Again, so adopted. Uh, item 13, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 202106, rezoning .79 acres of parcel number 112-15-011 and 112-15-011A, section seven, township 21, range 13 east from HB1, Historic Neighborhood Business, to HMF, Historic Multifamily, case number REZ2101. Shall I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and the ordinance is adopted. I believe we concluded the people's business and the last item is adjournment.
Let's adjourn.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.